Um, so is this to remind me what this is for?
This is for the U B C uh Freedom of Expression Club um regarding the parking regulations on um.
Okay.
Yeah, for the new uh Environmental Act. Um, I want to start off just by asking you quickly um. Because initially, I think when I saw the news, um what was being discussed was. There was a lot of concern on how these specific regulations would impact. Lower income households and their ability to travel and get around the city. But reading the regulations through myself, which is Appendix E N F of the new uh citywide environmental plan. Um, the I believe City Environmental Action Plan it's called. Um, it becomes pretty clear that you have taken into account um how this will impact um lower income families. Um specifically uh. The parking permits um that have higher fees for uh vehicles with large carbon footprints. Will only apply to new vehicles with large carbon footprints to encourage people to buy electronic or electric powered vehicles. Um and not affect uh people who already own older carbon powered vehicles. And it also discusses um measures to decrease or waive fees for those with lower socio economic standings.
And if that wasn't enough, I made some amendments to try and push for that.
I saw um and you just sent those over this morning, so could you maybe uh tell me a bit about those amendments you made uh that you sent over to me earlier today?
Just have to find them here. Yeah, so I made one, two, three, four, five amendments. Four of them were passed. One of them was basically deleted because the section that it amended got really changed a lot. So the first one that passed was the first recommendation was that council direct staff to accelerate implementation of the transport. Twenty forty directions and then I amended it to say. Seeking to ensure that accessibility needs of seniors and people with disabilities are accommodated. And then the second one that passed was P, the council direct staff to seek authority in Vancouver to. To facilitate um building owner access to favorable financing, et cetera, et cetera. And then I amended it to add making every effort to ensure that renters are protected from displacement and rent increases. And then the last one, which I'm hoping can include just low income people in general for the whole C E A P. Program is a council direct staff to include in all C E A P reports. Reports, actions, and recommendations. And analysis of how each one will impact households earning under fifty K per year. And how to mitigate these impacts if they are adverse.
Excellent, and I think um going to the first amendment you made there. I know one of the concerns and one of the questions that I'd sent you um. Earlier on when we were uh talking back and forth on email was that um. One of the regulations that the bill is going to put in place is a reduce in the maximum parking capacity of any building, so. Currently um for people listening, uh in Vancouver, buildings have a minimum parking capacity, which means that each building built. Uh must be built with a minimum amount of parking space. Um, this new bill proposes to both uh as an effort to try and um. Lower housing prices for people who don't need parking, but where the buildings are built with parking because it's currently mandated. And also to try and encourage use of transit, walking, biking. Um, where abolishing the minimum parking regulations and instead putting in place uh maximum parking space regulations. And one of the concerns I personally had with this is that uh when I last year in November actually. Um, had a hernia surgery downtown, one of the difficulties uh that I encountered was that. Um, after the surgery, uh my mom was unable, who was taking care of me. Was unable to park at the building in which I had the surgery and lucky enough, she was able to find curb space nearby the building. Um, and helped me down to her car where she had like a five minute um loading zone only parking space. Um, but had those circumstances not worked out perfectly and perhaps had I been. Um, someone more physically compromised um or an older person who needed more physical assistance to. Get out to the vehicle, um something like that could have been a real difficulty, so. I want to maybe ask you how you plan um where mobility issues um for people either making it to transit. Or for people who maybe can't walk or bike um and need um personal private vehicles. Um, to get places, to get around, to get on with their daily lives. What plans are in place to sort of minimize the impact that this uh Environmental Action Plan has on these people?
So fir- first thing, this is twenty twenty. And this probably won't happen till twenty twenty five. Hopefully, we'll have the Broadway Sky Train Station by then, so public transit up there at least will be a bit better. And there's supposed to be tons of consultation. And there's even um. Uh, it's all throughout the whole climate emergency is they're putting this principle of quote unquote equity. And there's even an equity committee that's going to be expanded. And I'm a liaison to the city's seniors advisory committee and the seniors advisory committee is really strong on the stuff that you're talking about. And um, I think they're gonna have to come up with a way to accommodate things like that. And I hope they will, and I hope people like us will keep pushing to ensure that it won't get. Implement until after this council is history and a new one is elected. So keeping an eye on it is quite important. Um, and keeping up the pressure to ensure that people in situations like that aren't harmed is important.
Excellent.
But it's also important to deal with climate change, so that's what we're trying to do here, both.
Absolutely, and I mean like personally, uh I think that if you're able to walk and bike and ride and take transit around Vancouver, you absolutely should do that. Whenever possible, um and it's. For what it's worth, I come from Calgary, which is transit wise, biking wise, walking wise. Uh somewhat of a difficult city to get around just because of its size, um the amount of urban sprawl it has. Uh and coming to Vancouver, that's one of the things I've enjoyed the most is that. I can bike to the grocery store, I can bike to the gym, I can walk to either of those places or walk to a friend's house pretty easily. Um, which is not necessarily the case in other North American cities, and it makes uh Vancouver especially. Um, well prepared to move into measures adapting and um helping to deal with the current climate crisis. One of the concerns that I did have. Um, and I'll just have to scroll up here um to make sure I have all the detail. Um, is that as part of the proposal to uh remove or. To enforce permits for on-street parking citywide, including in residential spaces um far from the city center. Um, there's a suggestion in the initial documentation um that with um. Decreased city parking or street parking rather, um because it's assumed that. Um, if you charge people for parking permits on the street, they'll be less likely to park on the street. And therefore, um there'll be more space available on the street because cars won't be parked there. And the legislation has the suggestion that um we either widen these lanes for biking. Or install green spaces and patios. And one of the issues that I have with the current state of this legislation. Is that it applies a relatively broad and generalized approach. Um, to a city that has very diverse neighborhoods, for example, I live um on in the Dunbar Southlands and. I've never really encountered congestion on my streets, but I do know that these streets are. Relatively narrow and that if we narrowed street space further by installing bike lanes. Or um green space or patios in space that is currently intended for street parking. It may be very difficult if there's two cars going the other way um to pass each other. Or if I'm biking, which is now not an issue and I can just pop up. Uh, on the sidewalk if I need to or just pull to the side of the road, um if um. The we install biking lanes. Um, and there's, there's more biking happening, um. It may be uh difficult um. With an increase in uh biking like uh traffic, sorry, it took me a while to get that out there. Um, with more people biking, which is the intention of the legislature, um it may actually become more congested. And I know s- the legislation does detail with some numbers on um how quickly um. People can be moved uh via private car or biking or walking or transit, and I was wondering if. Um, you could tell me anything about the, the way various speeds of um. Transport impact the ability to move people in distances, if, if that makes sense, I'm sorry if I uh.
There is a graph in the staff presentation that says. You know, so many people per hour by transit, so many people per hour by car, so many people per hour by bike and by walking. I don't have that info in my head, but if you go to the city website or it talks about the climate emergency plan. Uh, you can click on that and, and find it. I think the issue, I don't think the city plans to put bike lanes on every street. I don't think that's gonna be an issue and there's gonna be a lot of consultation. One of the advantages of having those. Narrow streets is that the traffic is slower and it's less dangerous. You have to wait for the car to go past you, you have to pull in and wait for the car to go past you before you can go. Um, yeah, so I, I mean, I don't think this is gonna be a huge issue. There's gonna be a lot of consultation, I don't think they're gonna put patios in front of people's houses unless they want them. I have seen some, there's a little corner place in Douglas Park. It has a coffee place, it's right in the middle of a residential neighborhood across from a park.
Oh, cool.
But everyone seems to enjoy it, you know, sitting out and having a coffee and a nice day and meeting your neighbors, so.
So uh.
It is true that um focusing on walking, biking, and skateboarding is kind of ableist. But hopefully, if we can get um more of that and fewer cars. Then the people who have to use cars can travel faster and more efficiently.
Absolutely, um another, another uh thing I wanted to ask is. Um, I moved to Vancouver about um three, three years ago, I want to say, and I was a student at U B C initially. Um, and I, I biked everywhere, I brought um from Calgary my dad's old bike, which was uh from the early two thousands or late nineties. And I'd heard lots about bike theft, so I make sure to lock it up well each night and. Nonetheless, within about four months, um my bike had both of its locks cut through. And it was uh, it ended up getting stolen, um. And I'm wondering with an increase uh in both demand for bikes because um. We're trying to encourage to people to bike and more people will be biking and there'll be more people wanting bikes. With both an increased demand for bikes as well as more bikes uh around the city and. Plans to uh have more places to lock bikes up, more places to store bikes. Wh- what's the city's plan to try and ensure that this doesn't increase bike theft? Or alternatively, does the city have any plans to actually try and reduce bike theft? Because it does get very expensive, um especially since. And the, the campus R C M P were relatively unhelpful um in trying to find. Uh, the bike because it just happens at such a large volume, they can't really deal with it. That can be really expensive if people are constantly having their bikes stolen and their locks cut through. So does the city have any plans to perhaps um. Crack down on bike theft or increase uh sentencing for bike theft, um and could you speak to that a bit?
So I think there's two things here, one is it would be nice to have better bike storage places. Like maybe U B C could have some secure bicycle places, I think the Sky Train Stations are getting some fancy ones now. So maybe we could have more of those, maybe, you know, people like you need to speak up to the city folks that are doing this and say, look, we need more of these and. People like me need to amplify that. The second thing, um I'm not really into more policing. Um, I think you gotta look at the reasons that pe- people are stealing and this is more systemic thing, right? So we need to reduce poverty, we need to have safe supply of drugs so people don't have to pay. You know, Hell's Angels to get polluted poison drugs to kill them. And they don't have to steal bicycles in order to do that. And city is working on that, but it's not done yet and we need some help.
Um, so uh just digging a bit um deeper there, um because I, I, I do agree to a large extent that. I mean, the, the people stealing bikes aren't stealing them for fun, they're stealing them either because they need the money from reselling them or. There, there's some need there that is fueling that, um and I'm, I'm interested um. Because you talked briefly there about providing um a safe supply of drugs. W- would you, in your ideal world, would that be done through private markets, um such as like. Uh dispensaries like we're seeing with marijuana, or would you um have the government provide a, a safe supply of drugs at no cost to the user?
Um. Well, it definitely has to be regulated and I think it should be supplied by the government and it should be free.
Alright.
It's like other drugs. Oh, other drugs aren't free, like other drugs should be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so and that, and you're talking of about opioids that are currently illegal, um I'm assuming, or, okay, perfect, um.
As uppers.
Um. Uh, let me see, um what other uh.
The city just passed a resolution actually to ask the feds to allow us to decriminalize. Possessions of small amounts of drugs in Vancouver, that's not providing a safe supply, mind you, that's mostly for taking the stigma off. There are new provincial regulations that allow doctors to supply safe drugs. Uh, to prescribe safe drugs and, and hopefully if it's decriminalized, the doctors will be more likely to do that.
Alright, um that's, I, I, I mean personally, like I'm all for, I, I don't, I don't think drugs should be criminalized, um. I'm, I'm not sure if I see eye to eye with you with uh funding the um. The supply of, the safe supply of drugs, but I, I think that's probably something we don't have time to get into today.
Funded, then people won't have to steal your bike.
That's, that's true, that is true, um. I, 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 I think there's, there's maybe other things um that, that could be better funded though and. I'm not sure that's where we want to be spending our money as a society. Um, I, I, I.
Not a lot.
Pardon?
It's not a lot.
How, what, what are the numbers, do you, do you know the numbers on that? Because I'd be very curious.
I don't know, but um my partner, my late partner, um had a really bad case of shingles. And he was on methadone for pain, which is one of the drugs the doctors prescribe as an alternative to opioids. And I remember his specialist saying that the op- the methadone was unbelievably cheap, it was like. Eleven dollars for three months or something.
So, okay, so um you're not, you're talking about maybe uh providing opiate alternatives, not opiates. Or, or are you about talking about providing opiates?
Safe supply, it should be what it is, I think what should be supplied is what people want.
Okay, um so like even to the extent like if a, if a person wants heroin, that should be supplied for free and safely by the government?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Heroin, you know, is, is not, doesn't. The worst part of opiates from my experience. In terms of what it does, what they do to you is constipation.
Well, I mean, uh like my, my father, my father's a firefighter in Calgary, which has a, a pretty bad uh. Not as bad as Vancouver, but a pretty bad opiate problem and. He's, he's had to spend quite a bit of his time administering uh Narcan to opiate overdose victims and that's. That's taken quite a toll on him, so I'm not sure that constipation is the, the worst um.
Ooh, but that's because the drugs are poison, that's why he has to administer Narcan. If the drugs were clean and they were prescribed by a doctor, he wouldn't be administering the Narcan.
Pe- like, um, but people, people get addicted to opiates, even clean opiates, even pharmacy prescribed opiates, I mean. Um, I think like our viewer.
Addicted to cigarettes and they get addicted to booze and they get addicted to caffeine.
That's true, and I, I don't think the government should be funding booze or cigarettes or caffeine, I think like if you, if you choose to buy those things, it should be your choice, but I'm not sure that the government. Should be providing the funds for those things.
But maybe we can agree to disagree and move on to the next question.
I think so, I think, I think so, um. So, um, one of the things, um, and I, I, I think you'd, you'd address this in these amendments that you uh made. Um, but the proposal suggests that it will quote. Allow people to save money on housing by not paying for parking that they do not need. Um, and it cites that housing or apartment complexes are often built with parking that goes unused. But um by simultaneously restricting on-street parking while imposing parking capacity maximums. The city would force down the supply of all off-street for, pardon, would force down the supply of off-street parking. While forcing demand upwards, only further incentivizing the construction of off-street parking and the rent of units possessing it. Uh, how do you plan to keep rent affordable while still enabling Vancouver rights, the freedom? Um, and the speed that a motor vehicle possesses, or do you envision a future where Vancouver rights? Um, it, it's more difficult for them to leave the metropolitan, metropolitan area of Vancouver unless. Uh, they are upper class and can afford all the costs that come along with owning a private vehicle.
So first of all, I don't know if not requiring parking like in apartment buildings will reduce the cost of housing. I think the cost of housing is based on what the market will bear. And developers will probably put in what they think. Their cus- their cus- buyers or renters will want. Um, the, there have been city studies that show that. A lot of apartment buildings have about thirty percent more parking than the people who live in them need. So uh my, what I suspect is that the developers would put in about thirty percent less than they're putting in now. To just try and meet the needs of the people who end up living in those buildings, so I don't think it will create more on-street parking.
Alright, um, uh with that, and I, I mean, I'm, I'm totally, um, I, I agree, one of the things I most agree with is, is uh. Abolishing um regulations that require minimum parking in buildings because I. Think if people are building a building, you shouldn't require them to build a minimum amount of anything, um but i-.
And also that's really good for embodied carbon because say you have a building that's got. Like now six floors of underground parking and then you reduce it to three floors, yours, you're. Not using a lot of cement, which causes a lot of carbon pollution, so.
Yeah, yeah, and um just um uh for people listening, um the, the creation of cement, um this is, this is something I had uh taken a class on. In university, um and the, the creation of cement and the production of cement buildings, which is a major construction material. Is an absolutely massive uh producer of carbon and other environmental toxins, so it is important that we cut down. Uh, on the use of cement um in buildings wherever possible, um. So, I'm trying to see whatever, I think we've just about, uh, okay, one other thing, um or two, two more questions. Um, one, one of the things with Vancouver's transit system, and I think it's. It's, it's a hard, it's a tough nut to crack because it's a super extensive transit. Super extensive transit system, um you can get to transit from just about anywhere, but the reality is, is that transit is really slow. Um, I can bike just about anywhere as fast as I can ride transit there, um. And if we have more and more people riding on transit, of course, um. Plans to implement a new uh railway line coming out uh on Broadway would help decrease this dramatically. Um, but do you have any other plans in the meanwhile or after this gets implemented? To try and decrease transit time it takes to meet someone on the other side of the city, um. Or um increase, sorry, sorry, yeah, perfect, if you have something to step in with there.
Um, in, in London, the day they started congestion pricing, they added three hundred buses.
Oh, wow, okay.
It would be great if we could do something like that, and the thing that happens when you reduce car traffic. Is you speed up transit traffic. And you speed up traffic of people who are making deliveries, so. Um, we had a guy from Stockholm was telling us about their system and that the, that the. People who made deliveries didn't even mind the congestion pricing because they could get around so much faster, so. There's a lot of, um. You know, figuring out one thing and how that's gonna affect another thing, which would affect another thing, which would affect another thing, and that's what the staff is gonna be doing over the next four years. And sometimes it'll probably, they'll probably get it a little bit wrong and we'll have to readjust. But I think going forward, I feel like they have a fairly good angle on it, I feel like we really need to reduce carbon pollution. And we need to do it in an equitable way so that the people who can afford the most, the most pay the most, and I hope. That's the direction that this, I think that's the direction that this is going in right now with this council, and I hope we can keep that direction.
Awesome, um and then my, my last question is, um what, what happens to the cars? Because I believe. The document cites that um. Ri- right, one of the arguments it uses is that right now, um thirty-three percent of families roughly, or percent of households. Um, in the Vancouver, um in, in the city of Vancouver. Don't own cars and therefore by having on-street parking and road maintenance. That thirty-three percent of people are essentially paying for everyone else to use cars and use roadways. Um, and part of the idea behind having parking permits is that. It levels out the cost so that people who don't own cars are no longer paying. For other people to own cars and to pollute and to have a larger carbon footprint. But uh the reason people park on street right now is because like a lot of families own. More cars than they have off-street parking for. And I'm wondering what the plan is for all these extra cars. When it maybe becomes a bit too prohibitively expensive to park them on street. Or if, if you think it's not a concern that people won't really consider getting rid of or selling. Their cars um just because of the increased regulations.
Or they could clean out their garage. I think that's a lot of thing, I think a lot of garages are being used for storage. Um, I don't mean, I don't know, when I gave up my car, I uh. Called the Kidney Foundation and they came and got it and they recycle it and, and uh. Put the money into the Kidney Foundation, you know, I don't think that'll be an issue, I think over time, fewer people will. Want to buy cars and there won't be so many that have to be recycled.
Excellent, um and then um one, one further question with that, um. That, that I, I didn't send you uh ahead, ahead of time, so uh apologies for that, but I do know that like. Um, the city is planning to install a um light rail transit or a, a, a train route to Whistler, um. And that I, I read somewhere that there is a proposal for that, um, I, I may be incorrect on that. Um, and in addition, um, the uh Evo, which is um similar to Cartago, a, a ride sharing. Service, um, is, is owned by I C B C, um, so. For people who want to take trips outside of the city or outside um the metropolitan area, um, would you like consider um? Perhaps an increase in support for either transit routes um to outside the metropolitan area? Or um for increasing the availability of um cars from organizations such as Evo. Um, which, which I believe are government, government run, uh because I think it's run by I C B C, which is run by the. British Columbia Government, so that when people do want to take a weekend outside the city. Um, they, they can rent one of those cars if they don't have a private vehicle and then uh go out themselves.
Yeah, I think Evo is owned by B C A A. B C Automobile Association, it's Mike, uh by Evo Carter.
Um. Is, is that, is that?
It says created by B C A A, so it's not government, but it's, it's kind of. Semi-government, I guess people think, I don't know, but I think, you know, different ways to get out, bus. Bus rides up to Mount Seymour and Cypress, you know, those kinds of things should definitely be expanded. To different hiking places, there is a train that goes to Whistler, I've been, got into Whistler on it. So, yeah, that's a good idea.
Excellent, um, well, I, I think that's about all, tha- thank you very much for taking the time to talk with me uh this Saturday, Councilor's, uh Jean. Um, I know you said to call you Jean.
Okay, you're welcome.
Um, yeah, you cleared, cleared up a lot of questions, uh and I really enjoyed talking with you, um.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah, have, have a wonderful rest of your Saturday, and do you have any final words you'd like to say, um before I end this?
Just to keep, just to anybody that's listening, to keep your eye on this. Make sure it's going in the direction that you want, which hopefully is to reduce carbon and. Make sure everyone is treated equitably and uh, yeah, let's go for it.
Awesome, thank you, councillor. Awesome, thank you, councillor.
Okay, goodbye.
Goodbye.